Vermillion City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, October 21st, 2024 will come to order. You please call roll.
Tolliver.
Here.
Lieber.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Genowine.
Here.
Hellwig.
Here.
Cheeseman.
Here.
Mira.
Here.
Miracle.
Here. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes from October 7, 2024 special meeting and the October 7, 2024 regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes or is there a motion to approve? Motion approved by Councilor Cheeseman and second by Councilor Genowine. Any other discussion on the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying nay. Minutes are approved. Adoption of the agenda. Does everyone have a chance to review the agenda? If so, are there any changes to the agenda or is there a motion to adopt the agenda as is?
Move to adopt it as is?
One second. There's a motion to approve as is. You mentioned that there's a proclamation. We would be adding a proclamation on there, but I don't think it has to be added to the agenda. Is that correct, John?
I think since under visitors to be heard can be done without being added or?
I think, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
L, does that suffice you? Okay. So there's a motion by Councilor Holland and a second by Councilor Price. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying nay. Agenda is adopted. Visitors to be heard prior to the proclamations. Any persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized. Go to the podium and state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard. Their remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item and after the subject has been announced by mayor, explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak for five minutes on each agenda item and public testimony will then be closed in the topic given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda items unless the council member moves to allow another person to speak and unanimous consent of the council. Questions from council members however may be directed to staff or members of the public through the presiding officer at any time. Other than the proclamations, are there any other visitors to be heard tonight? Please come forward, state your name and address at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Gail Bickle. I live at 120 Elm Street. Am I too loud?
You're good. Thank you.
So, I'm gonna be very informal. I'm a West River girl. I've lived here 40 years, almost in the same house. A house that was brought up top from the flood. And I've put in a new furnace, new roof, and new plumbing within the last five years. They tore down the house next to me and we had warning, so we went to city code. And they put up signs on the building stating that it was danger asbestos. So we felt a little confident and thought, oh, they're probably gonna take care when they take this building down because it's got asbestos. And I have personal experience with asbestos. My aunt and uncle died from mesothelioma. And it was so painful, you couldn't touch them at the end of their life. They got it from removing asbestos from an apartment complex in LA that they owned. And he was a farm boy, so he did the work himself. And this was 40-plus years ago. Now, just before I came here, I heard that a student from USD who went years ago has been removing asbestos most of his adult life and he is deathly ill from the asbestos. So, three weeks ago, the building was torn down with a large, yellow, cat-like machine taller than my house with pinchers on it. And they crushed the asbestos. Happened to be a very windy day and I didn't know they were doing it. I came home from the library and there was a cloud, I kid you not, like Hiroshima over my house. And you couldn't hardly see in my backyard. And I was afraid to even go get my dog. So I left and I came back when they were finished. I went into my yard, got the dog, and went and camped for three days. Now, I have spoken to some professionals and they said, oh, you're just scaring yourself by what you're reading on the internet. And I'm here to tell you, I know research, I know good websites. I'm an educated person and I know how dangerous it is. So we abate commercial properties in Vermillion, but there's nothing in place for under a four-plex, like a residential property. And the guy across the street just bought the gray house, Tim Hanson. And it's a very, quite a large building. And he took all the asbestos siding off piece by piece, which you're supposed to do. Don't crush it. That releases the fibers into the air and took it out to the landfill. And the clapboard underneath was beautiful. So we're proud of Tim. The person that tore down the building has since piled a 10-foot pile of dirt next to my property, right in the middle of his lot. When it blows, my plants are covered with gray dust. My eyes itch. I can hardly breathe. And when you touch the dirt, it makes your hands hurt. I went barefoot in my yard last night and it made my feet itch. So now, I didn't bring any handouts. I'd be glad to do some handouts and come back in a week, two weeks with some more documentation for you. But I seriously believe we need to start here and abate residential properties for the safety. It's a half a block away from City Hall. When it blows, it's blowing downtown. Sometimes the wind comes from the north. That day that they tore it down, it went south. And our cars are covered with dust next to that property. Now, the lot itself is blowing. He took all the top soil off last summer. It blew for a whole year. Now, he took more dirt off and it is like silt and every day it blows. He has no plans to put a ground cover down. He said he would water it down to form a crust if he thought it was going to blow. It has blown every day this last week. So, one of my friends said, tarp the pile of dirt. Go buy tarps, send him the bill. Well, that, he's not gonna pay for tarps. So I don't know what we're gonna do and thanks for your consideration. I'll come back and bring some handouts. I'm not a very good speaker, so forgive me. Did you understand, I hope, what I said? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bickle.
Are there any other visitors to be heard?
Seeing now, moving on to the proclamations. First one. First proclamation should be recognizing Senator Tim Johnson's service to Vermillion. Whereas, Tim Johnson grew up in Vermillion and graduated from Vermillion High School, where he held a record for the number of touchdowns scored in a single season. And whereas, Tim Johnson earned a bachelor's degree in political science, a master of public administration, and a law degree from the University of South Dakota. And whereas, Tim Johnson practiced law in Vermillion and served in the Clay County State's Attorney's Office. And whereas, Tim Johnson represented Vermillion in the South Dakota House from 1979 to 1982. And whereas, Tim Johnson represented Vermillion in the South Dakota Senate from 1983 to 1987. And whereas, Tim Johnson was elected as South Dakota's sole United States House Representative for five terms, serving from 1987 to 1997. And whereas, Tim Johnson was elected to serve three terms as United States Senator for South Dakota from 1997 to 2015. And whereas, Tim Johnson gathered the votes needed to provide earmarks to help with the construction of the University of South Dakota's current medical school building, Vermillion hike, bike paths, and many infrastructure projects around the state. And whereas, Tim Johnson was respected member of Congress who is recognized as a hard-working, centrist leader who continually demonstrated the ability to work with members of both political parties for the betterment of South Dakota and the nation. And whereas, the passing of Tim Johnson on October 8th, 2024 was a reminder to reflect on Tim Johnson's humble but long-lasting and dedicated service to Vermillion, Clay County, and South Dakota. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the governing body, City of Vermillion, South Dakota, on behalf of citizens of Vermillion, express our condolences to the family of Senator Tim Johnson and express our profound gratitude for his life and service. Did, in Vermillion, South Dakota, this 21st day of October, 2024. I have another proclamation, which is congratulating the 2024 Vermillion High School Boys Soccer Team, which we see here. Whereas, and before I start this, I do apologize if I get names mispronounced. I've tried and we've made a few notes, okay? So, here we go. Whereas, the City of Vermillion wishes to honor and recognize the Vermillion High School Boys Soccer Team on their winning season. And whereas, the commitment required for student athletes to be part of a sports team includes meeting required grade and attendance requirements, in addition to attending daily practices, traveling, and scheduled games. And whereas, on October 19th, 2024, the Vermillion High School Boys Soccer Team competed in the Class A State Championship Game at Crane Youngworth Field in Yankton, South Dakota. And whereas, the number-one seed, the 2024 Vermillion High School Boys Soccer Team, won the South Dakota State A Championship with a thrilling 3-2 victory over the number-two seed and runner-up team, James Valley Christian Vikings. And whereas, all members of the soccer team contributed during the season to the success of the state championship through team practices and in challenging each other to build a state championship team. And now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the governing body, the City of Vermillion, South Dakota, for and on behalf of citizens, do hereby wish to recognize and extend congratulations to 2024 Vermillion High School Boys State Soccer Team for winning the 2024 State South Dakota A Soccer Championship. Aaron Bingen, Gabe Haas, Aiden Coink, Camille Shorn, Landon Spisozzi, Teagan Wells, Kyler Wallen, James Nissen, Sam Nissen, Michael Robe, Ian Jobe, Dominic Herrera. This is gonna be difficult. Sphere, Ansurge Jepson, Caleb Chasinghawk, Alex Port, Maddox Stanley, Gage Beverly, Cameron Robb, Caleb Kirky, Liam Peters, Daryl Church, Keaton Stanley, and Gavin Grease. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Vermillion City Council hereby recognizes also the dedication of the coaching staff, Sully Gottier, Dustin Sockness, Hari K., Varun K., and head coach I was told to say K. And head coach Kurt Kurt Nelson, dated this day in Vermillion, South Dakota, 21st of October, 2024. Congratulations, boys. Now, traditionally, we've also asked that the team come up, stand in front of the podium. We'll do a photo for you guys as well. If, coaches, you wanna come up and you want to accept the proclamation, that'd be fantastic. And after the photo, if you wanna say anything, you can.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, usually we just kinda stand and John usually ducks out.
Well, he doesn't.
Can't see from there. Yeah, you can't. Oh, yeah. Not anymore, you can't. Not anymore, you can't. You just look like you have tall torso. You wanna duck a little bit? Yeah, parents get a photo now. Hardly look.
I'm just looking straight forward.
Yep, I'm looking at the exit sign.
Come on, Cam.
Good? All right. And, Coach, if you wanna say anything, you can go ahead as soon as everybody gets seated again.
Thank you. We have tons of people to thank. When you win something like this, it's a total community effort, so I could go on and on, but as it pertains to the city and the council specifically, you know, we really appreciate all the park space, the partnership with Parks and Rec, the mowing, the lines, and everything that they do to help out Vermillion youth soccer and enable us to, you know, provide soccer services to all the youth in Vermillion at a really low cost. That's enabled all these, these boys to really develop some really good friendships, a lot of skills. This team has been working really hard all season. We were the number-one seed and we were happy to get out of Yankton with a thrilling victory Saturday night. So it's been an outstanding season. Really proud of the boys and happy to be back here, first time since 2012, with the state soccer championship. So, thank you again. We appreciate it.
Thank you again. Congratulations, boys. You guys are welcome to stay for the meeting if you'd like. Sure, it's exciting. Yeah. Weird. We should've done this at the end of the meeting. Make them sit through it all. All right, moving on. Public hearings. We have a request for a variance to decrease the front yard setback from 30 feet to zero feet for the construction of an off-street parking for Hillside Community Church. Jose?
Thank you. So the city received a petition requesting that the front yard setback be reduced from 30 feet to zero feet for the construction of off-street parking. If granted, the variance would facilitate the use of the property as a church by allowing the owner to increase the area that can be used for off-street parking. The city council, acting as a board of adjustment, hears and decides on any zoning ordinance variance requests. Prior to deciding if a variance is to be granted, the board needs to consider any public comments and review. Several factors found in the ordinance should be considered by the council. I do have a table with all those items and city staff comments. If you so choose, I can go through them. I'd rather not. But regardless of that, the applicant has paid the fee for the variance request to be advertised and considered at this meeting. Staff would recommend approval of the variance to decrease the front yard setback to zero feet for the construction of an off-street parking lot at 1800 Constant Street. Staff also recommends that if the variance is granted, that it's only applicable to the construction of the off-street parking lot and not for any future building construction. For the variance to be granted, there needs to be a two-thirds vote in favor of the variance from the entire board. That means that six out of the nine members need to vote in favor of the variance. I do have an exhibit here showing the location. This would be Constance, James. This here is actually the parcel for the church. This is West Cherry Street, which is a DOT highway. The parking lot right now, the paved parking lot, consists of this area where you see the vehicles. This area here, that's hatched. That's a gravel parking lot that the church, I believe, put in there about a couple of years ago at the most. And that was due to the overflow. They already were having an issue with parking. At the end of the day, what they're trying to do is move some of that parking during services off the street and into their parcel. So, granting, as I mentioned, as I allude to in the memo, this would facilitate that and hopefully release some issues that they may have with the neighbors with parking, especially on Sundays. If there's any questions, I am available for answers and we also have the church's representatives here as well.
Thank you, Jose. Are there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing now, council for discussion. Councilor Lieber?
Just clarification. When it says the front yard, that means closest to Cherry Street, correct?
No, in this instance, because there's three frontages. Every street is a frontage. So here, they have a frontage on Constance. They have one on James, and then they also have one on Cherry. So essentially, here, there, that would be zero. Here would be zero, and here would also be zero. So, if the parking, if the variance were to be granted, the applicant would actually be able to park all the way up to that line there and all the way up to this line here. Not saying that that's what they are going to do, but that's what the request would be for.
Councilor Price?
Jose, I know for like residential apartments and stuff, we have minimum parking requirements based on units and occupancy. Is there something similar for churches?
There is. The requirement, if I, I'm working off memory here, but I believe it's one space per four seating space within the main chamber. I don't know what you wanna call it.
And they say 450 is what they're at right now? Or that's their total attendance over two? Right, so I don't know what their, do we know what their seating is?
I don't know about their seating as right now, no, but I
Good evening. My name is Terry Tenet. I'm just chairing the expansion committee for our church. And we currently have over 450 in attendance any given Sunday. We hold two services at the present time. And so what you see there in the photo probably isn't a great representation of today. We're parking, these are all filled up across here. Sunday, we had 40 cars in the street parked. So, we feel that if we could go to a zero setback, we would create 40 to 60, depending on how we handle the handicap parking, additional spots in our parking lot. So, that's the real push here. And we're growing as a church. We've doubled in the last two years, I'd say since COVID, and so
I guess the question is, do you know what your seating capacity is in your auditorium?
Yes. Our seating capacity today is just under four, right at 450, so we're bursting at the seams. We're making some modifications inside of our church to seat more people.
Thank you.
We're strategically, we're thinking we're at 600. We're approaching 600 in the next year and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Cheeseman?
So, if you could put that picture back up, could you just point out exactly what you wanna do?
Actually, I'm gonna do one on there. So if you, there's the church. I'm gonna switch it here. Here's the church. So what they're planning on doing is essentially putting a parking lot, enlarging the parking lot considerably. But, so I don't know if you can imagine it, I guess, from that to this. But, so they're gonna be removing some of the parking space that they already have paved, or at least add on to it. But the church would be right here, the existing church, and the parking lot would be extended to the, to the east in this fashion. As you can see here, here's that flat part of the church and it would just be extended to the east. This here, that line, that's actually the property line. So that line would be this line here, that you see that, sorry, yep, that setback line right there. Yeah, sorry, right here.
On the other side, on the north side, then, you wouldn't be eliminating or interfering with the sidewalk at all?
No, on the north side, they would be able to go all the way up to the sidewalk, but they wouldn't, we wouldn't be moving the sidewalk at all.
Okay. If I can ask the question, though, is there going to be a barrier to stop people? You know, not everybody's gonna pull straight up and stop at that sidewalk. Is there going to be a curb stop or something so that the nose of these cars aren't gonna interfere on that sidewalk?
So depending on how wide the sidewalk is, and I'm not exactly sure if this is a five-foot or a four-foot. If it's a five-foot sidewalk, then we do not require a curb stop. If it's a four-foot sidewalk, then we would be requiring that curb stop.
stop. If it's a four foot sidewalk, then we would be requiring that curb stop. That is something that we can definitely work with the applicant as far as putting a curb stop regardless of the width of the sidewalk. But I do understand what you're saying.
Any questions? Counsel Toller?
It's the green button.
Thank you. I always got to ask. Terry, you think this would leave the parking on the street then? If you can get all these additional spaces and get them all taken care of, would that pretty much leave Sunday? Yeah, that certainly is our goal, to do that. So we've entertained busing from different parking lots too, to do this. But again, this, this parking lot, we go directional, so it's slanted parking. It's one-way down the aisles, so that's how we're going to get the increased spots. And we had a design firm lay this out for us. So we're hopeful and confident we can make it work, but we're looking for some assistance. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Jose, hold on one second. Jose, and looking at that map of the prospective parking lot, are they still going to be required then to maintain that approach off of James Street?
Yeah, the approach would still be here. And they would, they would be utilizing it.
I just didn't know it didn't, it wasn't drawn out there, so I wasn't too sure. There's another question over here. Counsel Merle, would you go first?
Well, I, I attend Hillside Church and I will attest to the traffic on Sunday mornings is rather heavy. I will come at this at a different angle as, from the fire department standpoint. Right now, with the way it is, parking on both sides of the street on Sunday mornings in front of the church on Constance, emergency vehicles, with the size they are getting to be, and they are, is going to be tough to get through there. Doing this parking lot would more, would I think pull, was what we're hoping, to get the 40 to 50 cars a Sunday off the street. And, you know, keep in mind, it is literally from eight in the morning till noon or 12:30 in the afternoon is when all this is there on Sundays. So it's not like there's constant traffic in that area. So obviously, I'm for this expansion. So I just wanted to go at it at that angle. So.
Counsel Genowine?
So I have ridden my bike path there, seen how much the, the traffic spills all over. So I understand, especially what you're saying. I am curious with the plan to go right up to the, the property line, what will happen when they have to take care of snow? Where will snow go? And will that then eat up the space that you've just created? And that's really, I mean, I, I know that's not something that we need to, I don't, I don't know if that's something that we need to consider, but it is something that I would question about this, especially if we have sidewalks there, making sure that the snow that is removed doesn't then spill onto the sidewalks or create ice issues.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to come and help out with this one, Terry? But I'll, I'll, well, Terry's coming up here. The UCC, actually, we granted a similar variance to this one. And I believe at the UCC that during heavy, big snowstorms, if they're, if they don't have space within their parking lot, then they will haul it out. But I'm not sure exactly how.
Yeah, sure. I guess if that's a consideration and that's a limitation, we would, we would certainly honor that if that's the case.
I'll add to that, Terry. Years past, the snow has always been pushed to the south on that parking lot, which I would assume it would continue to be pushed to the south there, especially if there's no curb, just to the edge of the parking lot.
Yep. The only, I'll, I'll, that's fine. I would just caution you that now you're going to be pushing into the DOT.
Yeah, you don't want to be pushing off the property.
Okay.
To be honest, in looking at this and looking at the plan, it looks like there'd be space probably to the north of that side parking lot, probably, depending on how much snow there is, obviously. But I guess that's an issue we could always see later. Jose, is this going to cause any problems with easements for utilities underneath there or anything like that, especially with the future expansion north?
No, that wouldn't cause, we allow any parking lot or, we allow, we allow any flatwork to be built over our easements. It would be the construction of any structure that we would not allow. So this would be fine.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Price?
I know we have sort of strict requirements on variance. And so whenever we have one, we look at them very carefully to meet these requirements. I think this makes a lot of sense for the residents in the area and for the safety, as Mike pointed out. And so with approving this, we can put that restriction on it, that it's for, just for parking lot and not for future building construction?
Yeah, we can.
Do that. I would move approval with that restriction.
Motion to approve with the restriction, just parking lot. By Price and second by Counsel Holland. Any other discussion on this at all? Counsel Leiber?
Just if notice that the people are parking over the, over the sidewalk, I think we would need to have some type of curb stop. It's maybe sometime in the future if they're not stopping.
And, and one thing that I will say, we have actually been working together on this for a long time. So I, I feel pretty comfortable in saying that if something happens, that I can reach out to, to Terry or to Counsel Merle.
Appreciate it.
Do you have something, Counsel Helwig, or no? Any other discussion, motion on the table? All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Both of us saying nay. Got two-thirds. Motion carries.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no old business on the agenda. We'll move to new business. There's a request to close Church Street from East Main to Kidder on Friday, October 25th for the downtown trick or treat event. John?
Thank you. This has become somewhat of an annual activity for the Vermillion Chamber Development Company, their annual trick or treat. It's typically done on the Friday preceding Halloween, get that first group of candy, I guess. The request is to close the Church Street from East Main to Kidder Street from 3:30 to 6:30 PM on that Friday, October 25th. The actual event is from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, but time to set up and take things down is why they asked for a little bit of extra time. This location is a little bit smaller than last year. Last year, they also used Court Street. This year, they're just planning to use this roughly two blocks, they'll say, block and a half of Church Street. We'd recommend approval of the request to close Church Street from 3:30 to 6:30 PM on Friday, October 25th for the VCDC's downtown trick or treat event.
Thank you, Johnny. Any visitors to be heard? Seeing down council for discussion? Counsel Genowine?
I seem to remember in the past, they also were on Main Street. Did we not close Main Street or have?
I don't think they ever closed Main Street. They did use the sidewalks, you're correct. I don't think they actually closed Main Street. I think just the sidewalks.
Has, has it been discussed? Because I know that people have talked about the, the safety of kids crossing the street during this event. Not just kids, but people in general, there's a lot of foot traffic.
Yeah, this, I guess we, we lied in the request that came from the VCDC and they felt that this is, this is what they requested, I guess.
Any other questions or comments? Your motion? Motion, motion approved by Counsel Merle, second by Counsel Genowine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Both of us saying nay. Motion carries. Next business, be a final plot of lots 16 through 26 in Jack Powell addition. Go ahead, Jose.
Thank you. So the city of Vermillion has submitted a final plot. As the owner of the land, the area to be final plotted is roughly 2.3 acres in size. It would be plating five single-family detached lots and six single-family attached lots. In addition to that, we would be getting the, the 10-foot for the north side of Baylor to complete that right of way. And then we would also be plating this small section of James Street over to the west end of this area. This item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the, at their October 15th meeting. At that meeting, the commission had several questions regarding the location of the, of the lots with relation to the lots already plotted. After a brief discussion, the commission recommended a 2-0, that the city council approve the plot as submitted. Excuse me. Staff finds that the final plot meets all the ordinance requirements and recommends, along with the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the city council approve the final plot as submitted.
Thank you. Any visitors to be heard on this? We'll wait. Any discussion by council at all?
I think they did that on purpose.
Motion approved by Counsel Holland and second by Counsel Price. Any other discussion? All in favor of finally sealing this thing up? Say aye.
Aye.
Both of us saying nay. Motion carries. Next, I'd be a resolution with draw from participation in the Vermillion River Hike Bike Path Grant Agreement.
Thank you. So this one, I'm going to read most of this memo, but just letting you know. The city has been working for a few years on reconstructing a portion of the bike path along the Vermillion River from 12th Street to West Street. The city has been trying to complete this project since the flooding events between 2009 and 2011 that damaged the, at the time newly completed bike trail. The project for recon, the reconstruction was awarded late in 2023 with construction to start around July 2024. Prior to the reconstruction commencing in 2024, the area along the Vermillion River experienced another flood event. After the flood occurred, the city assessed the damage and determined that it would be best to request from the DOT and FHWA that the city not be required to pay back the grant money used for the construction of the trails. Staff felt that this option would remove the expense of reconstructing the trail in the future, performing costly maintenance after flood events, and of purchasing property to relocate the trail. The DOT recommended that the city draft a resolution, which is presented, I guess, to you guys today, where the council acknowledges the withdrawal of the project and that all the costs to date be paid to the DOT. Additionally, the city would not be responsible for the reconstruction of any of the trail or for returning the used funds to the DOT or to FHWA. However, the city would need to return any unexpended funds to the DOT. The original grant received by the city in 2005 was for $750,000. The money was intended to be used by the city for the construction of bike trails in the community. The money has been used for construction, to construct trails along the river, along the bike path, and along Stanford Street, to name a few. Currently, there is approximately $80,000 left of the original grant. The DOT estimates that the city will need to repay no more than $6,575.84 to BX Construction and $3,883.95 to McCleary Engineering for a total of $10,000, $10,459.79. These costs are associated with a portion of the mobilization and bonding expenses incurred by the contractor and for consultant services. Although the DOT had a precise estimate, they asked the city to round up the amount to $12,000 in case additional costs have been incurred and are not accounted for yet. Administration recommends allowing the mayor to sign the resolution.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Counsel Holland?
Are we going to tear up the existing?
Are we going to tear it up?
Tear, yeah. The pieces, they're not, you can't travel them, is that correct?
So no, we're not going to be tearing them up. If anything, we would be tearing up a section of it to, so people don't go on the portion that's abandoned. But no, we were not planning on tearing it up.
So there's going to be little tiny sections of bike path, so to speak?
Yep. Yep.
Interesting.
You can consider it flood prevention, I guess. Thank you, erosion control.
No, it follows, erosion follows the bike path, unfortunately.
Yep, it follows it.
So is it, there's currently 80,000 left of the original grant? So, and I have, I don't know all the wording of the grant, but it's there to construct a bike path. There's also part of that bike path, because of the flood, that's needing to be cleaned up.
Yep.
Could any of that grant be able to utilize for that, being it's to help utilize said bike path that's already in place?
So, no, we cannot utilize a grant to clean the portion that's, that's with debris. That, that portion that's actually west of 12th Street, that was originally built with this grant. So we would actually have to use city funds to clean that portion. And we did that a couple of years ago. We actually cleaned it and I believe we spent about $30, $40,000 to clean that section. And the issue that we run into is that we don't have property along there. We just have an easement that's 25 feet wide, and then we have a fence. So right now, after the cleaning that we did a few years ago, the land between the trail and the river, we have five-foot berms from the debris that we moved off the trail. We cannot dump that into the river because we don't have a permit from the Corps, and we can't put it on the other side of the fence because that's private property. In addition to that, we do have a fence, and that fence right now, instead of being a six-foot fence, is actually more like some places a four-foot fence, other places a two-foot fence. So we have to grab that fence, race it up. Again, we don't have an easement on the other side. So the only way that we can do anything there, if we were to do anything, is to drive a dump truck down the trail, which we would destroy it at that point, haul it out. So now we have to rebuild the trail completely just to clean the debris out. So, yeah, it's a no-win situation.
You can't just clean it out with a bobcat and haul it out?
We, we could, but it's going to be, instead of 30,000, it's probably going to be closer to, I don't know, 150,000.
Right.
Yeah.
Any questions? The intent of the, hopefully is someday reroute this thing, correct?
Yep, that's the intent. Intent is to reroute it.
I just want to make sure citizens realize that we're just not giving up on this bike path that everybody's wanting and excited for.
Yeah.
It's just with floods and mother nature.
Yep. Even the section that we were planning on rebuilding, we probably could have rebuilt it. The problem that we ran into is that section, the portion where we were going to tie to by the river, that actually eroded further to the east. So we would have had to redesign that and actually acquire property from other property owners just to get that done. So, and that's the thing that we're afraid of, that it's just going to keep on eating the, the bank away. And we're going to have to move that tight point further to the east.
Now, as a side question, is, is all the stuff we're doing down there to clean up and all that eligible for FEMA reimbursement?
We've, we've been talking to FEMA about it. And I guess we haven't received their response at this point. They consider that as debris, but they also realize that in order for us to clean it, we would have to tear up the entire trail, which was in damage and by the flood. And so they're going through their process to give us an answer. The thing is that we can utilize, if we do get money from them, we can utilize it to either clean up the trail or to do, my understanding is that we could do renovations or facilities within the vicinity of the trail. So that could be at Cotton Park. They don't define what vicinity is, because I asked. So, yeah.
Any questions from the council? Counsel Holland?
If, if we do this, which I think is a good idea, does that mean that any future extensions or plans would be on our, our dollar, not the state's?
No, not necessarily. They would be, you can assume it's either going to be the city funds, or they're going to have to be, the state also has a different fund. I can remember what the name of it is. But it's essentially for bike paths and walking paths. And we could, I think it's up to half a million dollar grant that the state issues yearly. It's a competitive grant that we would have to apply for, but that would be an option for that.
I'm not crazy about the state getting involved, the state, because they say it has to be cement. Bike paths don't need to be cement.
This one is cement because we chose it to be cement.
I thought it was because the state said it had to be cement, had to have truck, drive a truck on it.
It could be, it has to be hard paved. So that could be asphalt as well. But, yeah.
If, if I recall, it had to be cement because that's what the original plan was, and we couldn't deviate from that said plan, correct?
Yeah. But that's what the original, but the original plan was concrete because we chose it to be concrete.
But that's what I'm saying. And then, once that was, once that was approved, the state would not allow us to deviate from that approved plan. So they're involved because, or they kept us to what we, our plan was.
What we did to start with.
Back in 2005. Okay. Any other questions? Is there any motions on this? Motion to approve by Counsel Holland. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Helwig. Any other discussion on this?
You need what?
No, I was just asking if there's any other discussion on this? I get it. You're being paid to be here. You got air jacks. I get it. I get it, you're being paid to be here. You got Eric Jacks, I get it. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or just saying nay? Motion carries. Next item, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission appointment. Hey, that's my part. With the adoption of ordinance thirteen seventy-six in June two thousand eighteen, the city council has a Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, and language can be found in the code. As noted, the, uh, term of appointment has been vacant due to lack of participation or members applying for it. There are currently, uh, the terms are for three years. The current members of the commission are Cindy Chaney, Derek Vanderhill, William Denninger, Susan Keith Gray, Carson Merkwan, and Jim Wilson. And then, of course, the vacant term, which is set to expire in two thousand twenty-seven. When available, two members who have expertise in disciplines of history, architectural history, architecture, planning, urban planning, American studies, American civilization, cultural geography, cultural anthropology, or related fields should serve. Uh, this is to assist the city council in evaluating any applicant meets one of the disciplines and individuals completing an expressive interest form, uh, are asked to comment on their background to meet one of the disciplines. Um, in reviewing, um, the expressive interest form for the applicant, I guess my only, my only question was, and this might be for John, do they have to meet one of those, those certain criterias in themselves, or is it just a recommendation?
It's a recommendation. Uh, when we were setting that stuff, that was a question that was asked, and no, we don't, they don't have to meet one of those. It's just preferred if possible.
That's why I just wanted to clarify. I did attempt to, to reach the applicant, uh, however unsuccessfully I was able to reach, so I wasn't able to interview her. Uh, but in just reading the application, obviously, it sounded, she had some networking of some people that she could speak with on that. Uh, I do realize that we also have other members on there that have some of those skills. We also have people that live in the historical districts, so we meet those needs as well. Uh, so, um, therefore, with a person being interested and being vacant for a little while now, um, I would make the, the recommendation to the council to appoint, uh, Coral Dirks to the Historic Preservation Commission, um, for this term, which is set to expire in two thousand twenty-seven. On that note, I'm assuming nobody in the audience is here to speak on that, so is there any comments from the council? Council Lieber?
Well, just a question. It says that they have to live in Vermillion, but she doesn't, didn't it say that?
Yeah, she did. For, oh, wait, you're right, that was the business address. Where did I see that?
It's Harvard, I see Harvard Forest right in that area between Main and the bus.
Yep, that's right. I remember seeing that now, correct.
They own additional property.
Okay. Any other? That's why it was a business, that was, must be employment. Yeah, I don't think she realized what... Any other questions? Motion approved by Council Price. Is there a second? He beat you to it. Council Cheeseman? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Or just saying nay? Motion carries. Next item, be a resolution amending the fee for special daily on-sale malt beverage and wine license.
Uh, thank you. I left Elijah's name on here because she had done the work and the research to put this together. We just didn't get it brought to the council before, uh, she left this summer. As we were looking through, um, some, uh, different items this past summer, uh, we noticed and became aware of some of the publication charges for the special daily malt beverage and wine licenses were exceeding the fifteen dollars that we charged. So then, um, Elijah took a look at, uh, well, what is some of these other committees' charge? And we included that in your memo, uh, kind of explaining, uh, what their rates are. And generally speaking, most of those rates are fifty dollars, uh, that seem to be kind of the most common charge, uh, up to three hundred dollars there. And right now, we have a twenty dollar per day with a fifteen dollar legal fee. As noted in the research you did, I think your cheapest legal fee, uh, for publication was just over fifteen dollars and went up to eighteen dollars. Uh, so in the proposed, uh, resolution is, uh, are two changes. One is to increase the, uh, get the notes here right, uh, to increase the legal fee to, uh, from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars, which should cover the cost of the legal publication that's required to, uh, being the legal notices. Uh, we also put it on our website that way. And then looking at adjusting, uh, the special daily, uh, the fee from twenty dollars a day to thirty dollars per day. For one-day event, that then would equal to fifty dollars, which seems to be a very common amount that is charged, um, with the other first-class cities on the eastern part of the state. Uh, so the resolution before you would make those two changes, the twenty dollars a day to thirty dollars per day, and the register, the legal publication fee from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars. And we recommend approval, uh, of that. I guess they would also note that, now, there is some staff time involved as we work with respective applicants. They're, uh, they put together the legal notice to process those respective documents, prepare the items for the city council. We didn't look at adjusting it too much, as then most of the events that happen in our community are done by nonprofits. They are for, uh, groups looking to, uh, provide an event for the community, to provide an activity for the community. And so, I guess we didn't feel the three hundred dollars per license fee, uh, would be appropriate for those groups, but just trying to balance that out. Uh, the last change to this fee was back in two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, John. Again, no visitors be heard. Any council members to discuss on this? Council Cheeseman?
What's the purpose of raising the fees?
Well, the easy one, I guess, if you will, is the legal publication, because that's, we're losing money on those in that we go, it costs us over fifteen dollars now, and so the twenty dollars should, uh, cover, uh, all those respective legal fees that were charged by the newspaper for publishing those. The other part of it is just, uh, it does take, uh, some staff time to do these, just to try to balance that out a little bit, uh, in terms of the time that's spent on a particular event versus, um, something that serves, I guess these do serve the community at large, but just general city government business, so. I guess we're, we're looking at a ten-dollar increase over ten years, or not ten years, eight years isn't too terrible.
So we're just meeting costs?
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? John, how would this be listed? Is it gonna, so it's gonna be listed, it's twenty dollars plus thirty dollars plus... Is that, I'm a little confused on all, there's a lot of numbers here, so I'm just confused.
Sure. So there'd be, the legal publication fee would be twenty dollars instead of the fifteen. And then the special daily, instead of being twenty dollars per day, would be the thirty dollars per day. So, uh, on the, your first page of your memo looks like in your, there, uh, your packet, it just provides what we currently charge, the twenty dollars per day and the fifteen dollars to advertise.
So it would just be the twenty, be a one-time fee to advertise, and then thirty per day that you'd require the license for?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense now. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any motions? Motion approved by Council Helig, and a second by Council Price. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or just saying nay? Motion carries. Uh, next item be a, to consider adoption of the Jack Powell Edition two thousand twenty-four, Community Development and Revitalization Plan.
So, a couple of weeks, I guess during the month of August, if I remember correctly, we have a developer who is looking at a tax credit project here in the community, and that would be for, uh, some senior housing in the Jack Powell Edition. When, uh, this, that is a point-based process, and so if, uh, that was a qualified census tract, they would receive the points that'd be helpful for them in their application competing against other tax credit applications. In this case, when that was last done, last done meaning the qualified census tracts were developed, this property was outside the city limits, and they did not, um, they usually don't establish qualified census tracts outside the city limits. So that led to Plan B to help, um, uh, score additional points to make this application competitive with other applications. And that is something called a concerted community development and revitalization plan. It's unfortunate Jack's not here tonight because he really, uh, did the yeoman's work in putting this whole plan together. In essence, what we did is we looked at the comprehensive plan the city's developed. We looked at the CEDS, the Community Economic Development, uh, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that CECOG prepares for their six-county member area. We looked at the community health assessment, uh, that Sanford did, I think in two thousand twenty-two, uh, comments we received during community development block grant hearings, as well as our own housing study that was done in two thousand twenty-two. All of those items all pointed to a need for senior housing, affordable housing, which is kind of the backdrop to setting up this plan. Then from there, we had to identify and point out assets and investments that have been made within a quarter to half-mile of this particular, look, look, application area, which is the Jack Powell Edition. Um, once we put all that together, that's in the concerted community development plan. For this plan to be considered, it needs to be presented to the city council and the community and see if there are any public comments, changes, or amendments to this plan, um, and then adopt that plan. Adoption of that plan then would have a concerted community development and revitalization plan on file, which would then allow the applicant to receive the points with respect to this application for tax credits. So that's a long-winded answer to kind of help set up why there is a lot of items that you have all seen several times before in other studies presented to you in yet another format.
Any questions for the council on this?
Uh, so this has nothing to do with what happened in our special meeting at noon today?
Absolutely not, no. Um, this is, um, a developer.
Different developer?
Exactly, yep, different developer, different project.
Something here. If they would happen to back out, would this put any limitations on anybody else developing this down the road in any other different manner?
No, I, actually, this might help, potentially. I'm not familiar, um, to Mr. Cheeseman's comment, the developer that presented the city council today. It might actually help them with their application if they were applying for certain types of other federal funding to be able to point to this plan. I do not see any hindrance, um, uh, that this plan would, would put on them.
I think what you mean, though, is if this was to fall through, would it hinder a future person from doing this land?
No.
Okay.
Pick up anybody else from doing anything separately?
On these plots?
On these particular plots, yeah.
No, this is, um, I guess really a very general-type plan that describes the, uh, the need for housing investment in that area, the investment that has been made in that area. Um, it's really just kind of a, a statement of conditions in hopes that, that we have as a community for that area.
Any other questions? Any motion? Motion approved by Council Murra. Second by Council Helig. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Or just saying nay? Motion carries. Is there a bid opening? So it's the city manager's report, John?
Uh, thank you. Got several different items for you. Um, our city county, or city Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the county Planning Commission, they're meeting next Monday, October twenty-eighth at five thirty P M. Uh, they're gonna be looking at an item in our joint jurisdictional zoning area, and this is a parcel that is, uh, south of, uh, West Main Street, just outside of city limits. Um, it's a property that previously belonged to the state of South Dakota, and now a private party is looking, uh, to rezone that parcel. The next night, the city council and the county commission, you have a special meeting at six P M on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, and that's to consider the first reading of an ordinance to rezone property also in the J J Z A. This is from A one to R R. This property is located in, um, north on Highway nineteen, approximately half-mile north of the city limits on the west-hand side, um, of Highway nineteen. Speaking of boards and commissions, as you did a few moments ago, we have two three-year terms on the Business Improvement District Number One Board. This is the board that works with the two-dollar-per-night occupied hotel room fee. Um, interested individuals are asked to complete an expression of interest form by five o'clock this Thursday, October twenty-fourth, in hopes that we'll have some applicants to present to the city council, uh, for your meeting on November fourth. Uh, the city is accepting sealed bids to lease the, just over two hundred and thirty acres of farm ground that the city has. It's east of town on the north-hand side of Highway fifty. The bid opening on those sealed bids will be at eleven A M on Friday, November first, and that we anticipate bringing, uh, to this, uh, the information to the city council so that you could consider making an award at your November fourth meeting. Uh, the November fourth meeting will also include a public hearing to review the progress of the East Clark Street project. Um, this is one of the requirements. We have some community development block grant money. In that, uh, particular project, we have a half-million-dollar C D B G award. Between the first draw and the second draw on that money, a, a public hearing is required to be held as part of the process for a community development block grant. A reminder that, uh, political signs are not to be placed in the public right-of-way. This is generally, uh, easiest way to do that is behind the sidewalk rather than between the sidewalk and the street. The landfill moves to their winter hours on November first. Uh, with winter hours, we do not have Saturday hours at the landfill. Uh, there is a draft of the proposed historic district for the southern portion of the U S D campus. We do have that available for review at City Hall. Um, and then finally, there is a raffle notification included in your packet. Vermillion After Prom is selling raffle tickets at twenty-five dollars each, or three for fifty dollars, or seven for one hundred dollars. Uh, the tickets will be sold until November first of this year. Proceeds from this raffle will be used to help fund the after-prom event, uh, prom decorations, and the two thousand twenty-six senior class trip. Uh, the prize is valued at eight hundred dollars and includes several items, uh, six tickets to the U S D N D S U football game. Too bad Jose's not here. I think those are the two first-place teams in the Missouri Valley, Missouri Valley Conference, Jose. Uh, two, six tickets to the game, six combo meal concession vouchers, six Coyote Landing passes, one tailgate spot, fifty dollars to the Charlie's Store gift certificate, so you can get some, uh, gear, and then a fifty-dollar Hy-Vee card so you can, uh, get some supplies for your tailgating. And that is the raffle notification for Vermillion After Prom. And just a reminder for our Labor and Finance Committee members, we do have a meeting right after this in the Powell conference room.
Thank you, John. I may have missed it from my absence in the last meeting, but did you give an update on the wastewater's forced main pipes as well?
Uh, that meeting, the council approved the work to remove, um, the temporary bridge, and the temporary bridge have not been down there this week, but it is largely gone. Um, there's some of the, uh, support structures that are gonna be removed yet this week, but the, the piping is gone. Um, the three forced mains are all in place and, um, and working. I do, I guess I should check with Shane. I'm not sure if the bypass between, uh, lift, main lift one and main lift two. I'm, I'm assuming they got that installed as well, but that, want to need to check on that aspect of it. Uh, but yes, we are back to, um, not having a temporary system to get our waste from one side of the river to the other.
Thank you. On that note, uh, next thing, invoices payable. Have you ever had a chance to review the bills? If so, are there any questions on any item, or is there a motion? Motion to, motion to pay the bills by Council Price, second by Council Lieber. Any other discussion on the bills? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Or just saying nay? Motion carries. Next item be consensus agenda. We have a couple of items on that. Uh, to set a public hearing date for November fourth, two thousand twenty-four, for the annual liquor and wine license renewals. Also, set a public hearing date for November fourth, two thousand twenty-four, for a reduction in a license premise for retail on-sale liquor license at Charcoal Lounge from six and eight East Main Street to six East Main Street. Transfer of retail on-sale liquor license from Coyote Convenience at eleven sixteen East Cherry Street to Charcoal Lounge at East eight, eight East Main Street, and a renewal of the retail on-sale liquor license at six East Main Street and eight East Main Street. Uh, that concludes the consensus agenda.
Move approval of the consensus agenda?
Thank you. Motion approved by consensus agenda by Council Price, second.
I'll second.
Second by Council Holland. Any other discussion on the consensus agenda? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Or just saying nay? Motion carries. Like, is everything on the agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Council Murra, second by Council Lieber. All in favor, say aye. Or just say nay?